Is there a dress code for graduation?
I don't want to show up too casual.
Yes.
Alrighty.
Yeah.
I will call this meeting to order tonight as the regular meeting of the Three Rivers Community Schools Board of Education. Lori, can we have roll call?
Amanda Allen.
Here.
Julia Ah.
Here.
Linda Baker.
Here.
Nicole Hofer.
Here.
Ross Daniels.
Here.
Erin Noah.
Melissa Patsch.
Here. Can we stand for the clip?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, we need a motion for approval of the agenda or if anybody has any questions or...
Some of them.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Lori.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Hofer.
Yes.
Ross Daniels.
Yes.
Melissa Patsch.
Yes.
Erin Noah.
Thank you. Motion passed. Let's see, how many people we have here? Five? Yeah.
Yeah.
Or six?
Six.
Six, alright. Thank you. Yeah, six zero.
Count yourself.
Yeah, I know. Okay, we have public comments right now. Does anyone wishes to speak to anything? No, nothing. Okay, move on. Alrighty, we have a bunch of presentations tonight. First one will be Teresa Bloat from ISD, and you're gonna have a whole bunch of stuff to talk to us about, so...
You go right up to podium up there and the microphone's on because we livestream, so...
Absolutely.
So you have the budget in your packet, so she will be reviewing that.
So I wanted to first share my apologies. Kelly Detnick is our CFO, and she had an issue, got called away unexpectedly today, so I just want to go over one of our four budgets. We actually have four budgets at the intermediate school district. We have informational services, career technical education, special education, and then the general fund. So the one I'm gonna be talking to you about is the general fund, and that's because by law, we're required to go around to the local districts and share the information about the proposed budget, and then afterwards, you would either do an approval or disapprove with comments. That then goes to our board in June, so they get that feedback before they then vote on their board. So I'll just go over kind of the general information. You can see the actual 2324 budget is there just as a reference, and then the 2425 is adopted as presented. Right now, that adoption includes our instructional leadership department. All of our local districts pay into that annually to help offset costs. We were able to give 100% of that back thanks to some grants. That's the second year we've been able to do that, so that would already be included in this. So if you look at the third column or the April proposed for 2526, total expenditures are expected at, whoops, let's start over here, total revenue or total revenues coming in are expected at $14,43,314. The expected amount is with a revenue over expenditures of $164,691. You can see in that next section, there's a non-spendable fund balance. That's for capital improvements that hasn't changed over the last few years, actually many years now, but that's just to make sure in case there's some kind of an unexpected cost, roof, et cetera. So fund balance over, the actual fund balance ending is projected at 28%, and I'm gonna go over the points of interest that play into that. So right now, point one, we're estimating a 3% increase in taxes and state payments in lieu of taxes for personal property. That's a best guess right now. We're reducing the interest amount by $220,000 due to unknown rates from the market. We're projecting a 4.1 increase or $27,733 in Section 81 state aid funds, based on the executive budget recommendation from the governor. Section 81 is because ISDs don't collect a foundation allowance in the same way that locals do. It would only be for the kids at the center-based school, so it's the different funding stream. Right now, number four, Great Start Readiness Program. We held the same for the 2425 rates and slots based on, we have 247 School Day, 58 Partial Day, and 43 Extended Programs. It's a total of 348. We're budgeting for no carryover, and actually, the expenses were beyond the budget amount this year, so that we needed to adjust for that. We had hoped that we would see even bigger numbers coming in with Great Start with the changes on the rules that allow for more families. There's no longer income eligible for GSRP. We saw some increase, but not as much as we anticipated. For number five, we include the GSRP Startup Funds of $50,000 for one local district. That's because they're opening a new one, so there were grants for anyone that didn't have one in the past and was starting one. That's gonna be in Ottawa. Number six, the Early Childhood 32P Block and 32P Book Literacy Grant. We budgeted the same amount as 2425, based on the executive budget recommendation. Number seven, Early Literacy Grant. We're estimating a 7% for an allocation of $668,750. That's an estimated deferred revenue of $358,809. That's because unlike a lot of grants, the money comes in before the expenditure, where with a lot of grants, it's we spend it and then we ask for the reimbursement. This one comes upfront, so it always looks like an inflated amount in our general fund. Number eight, the McKinney-Vento or Homeless Grant is budgeted at $84,080, which is the same allocated amount as 2425. Number nine, the Rural Education Achievement Program Grant is budgeted at $33,434. That's specific for smaller rural districts to be able to help offset costs. It's the same allocation as 2425. Number 10, the Early Head Start Grant is estimated the remaining amount of the March 2025 and the February 26 grant. That's because we cross two fiscal years with these grants, so that's why you'll see that split differently. So there's a $1,466,789, and that includes tech and training supports, and then the estimated March grant is the $2,6,200. Number 11 is the Mental Health 31N Funds. 100% of that goes into hiring early literacy consultants that then support the nine local districts. The current spending, again, this was money that came in earlier, so it had to be deferred, so the current spending for that, for the mental health funds, is the 2223 year. It's projected to spend it by the end of the year, and we've actually caught up to ourselves. You might remember for the mental health supports, the grant came through and they had money on the table. We sat down as local superintendents and decided to apply for the grant. We didn't have a plan in place because the turnaround was like within three months. So that money did come in and then was spent after. Number 12, the Title I Regional Assistant Grant or the RAG Grant was budgeted $124,033. That's the same allocation as 2425, and that's based on eligibility of a district, so 100% of that goes back to a district support. MAISA is the 23H Early Math Grant. The estimated balance of that is $34,959 to be spent by September. That's for math supports into the local districts as well. Number 14 is miscellaneous grants. MAISA has had quite a few of those for this last year. We are estimating that $223,314 for the 31P. That's the Trails Grant for Mental Health. That's money that comes in and out to support the nine locals. Right now, we're not seeing any additional MAISA grants. That's the organization for ISDs. There might be more coming. We haven't seen them yet. Number 15 is an estimated adjustment to the Michigan Public School Employee Retirement Services Revenue Offsets. You can read through those different ones, but it's really just the estimated adjustments. You guys have probably talked about that, too. Number 16 includes the transfer of funds from CTE to General Fund. That's for business office services. No longer for a coach consultant because CTE is now hiring a full FTE, so that comes directly out of CTE. Number 17 includes informational services, consortium personnel, and operational expenses. Number 18 is budgeted funds for projected computer upgrades, cameras, softwares, and furniture and equipment. Number 19 is the budgeted MIPSR stabilization rate at 15.02% of the salary. That's an increase of about 10.58%. And we did acknowledge that as you look at number 20, the amounts for insurance premiums have gone up. We know they haven't gone up as much as the insurance costs, so that certainly is a concern for staff across the county right now. So I don't usually have to do this without Kelly, and she's brilliant, and I hope that I can answer any of your questions. Please, do you have any questions related to this budget? That's very gracious of you. Thank you for your time. Well, most of it I could answer, but there's a couple that made me go, "That's language Kelly uses, not me." Thank you for making time for us today.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Alrighty, next we have, oh, our ISD Board Election Resolution Overview.
Yep, so there is information in the board packet that includes the two representatives that are candidates, Patricia Keller and Teresa Danbury. So there was background information for both of those candidates. Linda, you are our representative for the election. If you're not able to make it, just let us know, and we'll make sure Erin can get there, so she's our backup. So if you have any questions on any of those candidates, let Teresa know. But just to know that that is coming up. There's two board seats and there's two board, there's people, two board people running.
So yeah, that'll be...
Two six-year terms.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have the middle school eighth grade Washington trip recap. So I see Jason Binghamman is here. There he is. So you've made it back.
See if I can get this going right here. Alright, so last year, we came to the board requesting that we, as a building, were able to set up a trip to Washington DC for our students. I'm not gonna take a bunch of the, bunch of the time away from the people I have next to me, but it was a, for a first time for our building in a long time, a huge success. I have with me Jen Robaire, who was kind of the brainchild behind creating one of these events for our students, and I think it's something where after, after this first time, we're possibly gonna have more kids because of how successful it was. With us from the eighth grade, we have a couple of students who are going to talk a little bit about what they experienced. Kalissa Bennett and Micah Tubbs and Fiona Smallcom are also with us here from the eighth grade.
Okay, well, they did graciously volunteer to come and share a little bit about the trip, what they enjoyed. I asked them to simply pick their one or two favorite things that they saw, they enjoyed, to give them something to talk about. Are you ready? Micah, you're up first. Your side's up. So this is Micah.
He's still got his number on him.
Yeah.
My favorite monument here was the Washington Monument, and that is because there is one really cool thing about it is when you lay down and you look up, it looks like it's about a lean. It's really cool.
They're all on the same line. They see all of them.
Oh, sorry. The greatest thing about this trip was probably viewing all the monuments and seeing everybody enjoy all of this. And another great thing about this was the food.
And he will honestly tell you. You can tell them what was one of your not-so-favorite.
The least favorite thing about it was walking in the very, very cold air while it was windy.
Because again, it doesn't matter how many times you tell an eighth grader that you need to have layers. They don't believe you. So it was a little chilly at night walking around, but as I remind them, they loved the monuments. It was great to see them see the monuments, but they are outside, and you do have to walk from monument to monument, so... Alright, next up, we have Kalissa.
I feel like going to Washington DC is a good opportunity and experience because you get to learn about, like, you get to learn a lot of things. There's a lot of walking, but it's worth it at the end. The bus ride was also fun because you could talk to your friends and just eat food, I guess. You get to visit a lot of monuments. My favorite monument was the Martin Luther King Monument. I liked that one the most because I knew a lot about it, but I enjoyed learning more about it and seeing his speech.
My favorite monument was the Thomas Jefferson Monument because it was really cool to see, and there were a bunch of Easter eggs about him and his career before being president.
Alright, well, thank you to all of them. I do have a couple more pictures and just little things that we did. Like here on the Jefferson, we had amazing tour guides, which is one of the reasons when we did present, we do have a company that we go through. They supply tour guides for us. They were able to get us into several places that weren't necessarily on our agenda, but they know how to do their inner workings, and they did them for us. So they weren't always just picture stops, but here is the whole group of everyone that went. We took 57 of us to Washington DC, and as you can see there, some people with blankets on because it was a little chilly. But this, actually, this day, our tour guide had held us off a little bit on getting to the White House because they had just taken down all of the security around it. You could actually get up to the fence post-transition of new president in there. So that was kind of cool that we actually got in and got close. Okay, so this is, of course, if you really wanted to know, we were busy. We were up early and out relatively late, but they did great. The security at the hotel was incredibly impressed because we also went this year over when daylight savings time happened. So we tucked them into bed at 9:30, basically, and they wanted to be later, but we're like, "No, no, no, because 5:30 breakfast is really going to feel like 4:30 breakfast." So they were great. They were all in bed. They were all asleep. It was, we needed it. A chaperone's too by that last night. So here again, I just come up a couple other pictures. We did, this was one of the ones I was really happy about. We got inside of the Capitol. That was one that wasn't on the original plan. We were just gonna do a picture stop outside, but our tour guide pulled some strings, and all of a sudden, we were hustled. It was a quick, "No, no, no, we've gotta get in now," and of course, everywhere has security, and, but we did it. We got in. We did go to some of the Smithsonian Institutes. We went to the American History and then the Natural History. And Micah, you can come back over here. This was a highlight of many of our boys' trip. I got a text saying that they saw someone, and I didn't know who it was, but Micah can tell you who they saw.
While we were in one of the historian museums, we got to meet Kirk Cousins.
You can tell them who that is.
I think most of you should know what it is, but he's a star NFL football QB, and he got traded to Atlanta.
Was he just wandering, and you noticed who he was? Because I'm terrible at seeing, noticing those people.
Yeah, we were wa, yeah, we were walking around in the museum, and it happened into one of the exhibits. We seen him because, I forgot his name, but he told us to come over there, and I immediately realized who it was.
One of our male chaperones, one of the dads that went, saw him and recognized him and kind of went up and said, "Hey, we've got some kids here from Michigan," because apparently, he played for Michigan State. Again, I texted my husband, and he went, "Oh, my gosh, how can you not know who that is?" And I was like, "Well, how am I supposed to know who it is?" But...
He's from Michigan, too, I think.
Well, I'm sure he is, as are lots of people. But I, I very, when they were excited, I was like, "Oh, that's great," and then I Googled. "Oh, now that's really cool." And then this actually was my favorite, the Arlington National Cemetery. I don't ever know why it's one of my favorite. I've done this trip twice before when I was in Sturgis, and then bringing it here, I think it is amazing to see our kids actually seeing everything that is available to them to learn and to take in and to understand historically parts of our country, and I think the cemetery does that for them. It's not, it's one of those where you do see them laughing and still enjoying themselves, but at the changing of the guard, like, I looked at the other two teachers that were there, and we just kind of had this moment of, "We did this. We got them here." And they're all quietly standing, watching the guard come in and change in front of, like, that's kind of a great moment. And we did. We had 57 people there from Three Rivers watching and learning, and that was very cool. We did make it to Gettysburg on our way home, and I don't know if there's any historical buffs among us, but if you were on my bus, we had a gentleman that spoke very, very quickly, but he was so excited that we were from Michigan because of the Iron Brigade, which again, I was texting my husband saying, "I didn't know this was as big of a deal." But the Iron Brigade was from Michigan, and as far as this gentleman was concerned, they would not have won that war without us. And he took us out into the back, back, back part where the Iron Brigade fought, and he took us out, and we got to see the statue from it, and he, again, brings some of that to the kids of the importance of where we're from and historically what's happened with our country. But the Iron Brigade was big. If you see an eighth grader that was on my bus, they should know what the Iron Brigade was, and they had funny hats, right? Different hats. I said, "Why, if you're the best shooters, would you put a different hat on them?" Then everyone knows who to get, but I didn't run the war, so... Alright, and that just ends us trying to be quick. Thank you again for supporting us and our students in going and hoping to keep going. So if you know any seventh graders, start and send them our way.
Thank you all who chaperoned and went along and planned and everything, because I know there's a lot of planning and logistics that go with that. And so I've had, well, my oldest daughter went on a 4H trip to Washington DC, and so I know that was a big deal, but it takes a lot of background stuff, too, so I mean, thank you all for doing that. Thank you, guys, for coming in and sharing your experience. It's something that is gonna be unique to you, and I mean, not everybody gets to do that, so...
And I think that's kind of a part of, you know, when Jen first brought this up, is there was a, you know, a collection of people that knows that this is a prime time of these, you know, kids' lives to try and do something like this, and where they can do it with their friends, and, you know, and so we wanted to be able to try and put together something that would give kids an opportunity like this, and then also other things, too. I know we've got a group that's, you know, gonna be going to Chicago here, here after school gets out, and, you know, the thought process is, is this went well, and, you know, we've already started looking into all the details and getting things set up, because it does take quite a bit of time to fundraise for this. But now that we've done this and we see what it's, what it's kind of about, and, you know, Jen said that she had done it before, but a lot has changed since then, and so trying to find out, you know, how can we make as many of these opportunities available for our students as possible? And that's what we're gonna try and do moving forward. So I know coming up here in June, we'll come to you guys again for, you know, for your blessings in terms of being able to put another opportunity like this together again for, for the next school year, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job, guys.
Alright, we've got the May budget update. Mandy's gonna come in.
Mandy, you get to follow that.
Thank you all very much, you guys.
I just want to say their presentation was much better than mine, so back we go to boring numbers. Sorry. They're important numbers, though, sort of. Okay, April budget update. Everything's going really good. I'm working on getting everything tied up for the final budget next month, and the next year's budget for, which is also happening next month. Teachers and all of the staff have been phenomenal. We charged them with trying to get a large majority, if not all of their purchases, completed before May 1st, and they have been phenomenal about it. They are communicating things that are coming up well in advance. They got probably, I'm gonna say, 85 to 90% of the purchases completed or at least known to me before May 1st. So we're, we're getting the year wrapped up. We have a couple of expenses that you'll see big changes on, operations and maintenance. You'll see a big change there. We have several roof repairs that are going to be done throughout the district, and we've been waiting for warmer weather, so those requisitions just got approved last week, and they're in the process of getting completed. The lower numbers that you see on the expenses, those are mostly your salary accruals. So how school funding works with contracted staff, like teachers, their salaries up till their first day of their next contract, which is the end of August, late, late August, get put back into this fiscal year. So we, even though school gets out in a couple weeks, we still have a good three months' worth of salaries for our contracted staff. So that's why those numbers are still quite a bit lower, and I'm going through each one line item by line item and double-checking them and making sure that they're gonna fall within budget, and on that last budget amendment, those will all be set in stone and perfected for the upcoming accrual. Any questions? Oh, and I'm very excited to say, later on this evening, you're going to be looking at two of our three contracts that we had to settle, and the third one, we are well on its way, and you will see probably next month. They're looking at voting, hopefully, next week sometime, so... Nikki's been phenomenal about getting those taken care of and really helping out with the budget, so that I am going into the year with known expenses, at least. The revenue still have lots of questions, but that's not Three Rivers. That's the state of Michigan, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, last we have the Acceptable Use Program. John Landano is going to explain that.
Hi. So the first thing is AUP is Acceptable Use Agreement. I know I like to use my little terms on things. So what this is involving is, it is involving our Take Home Technology, which is our one-to-one, and recently, we have observed an increase in Chromebook damages, missing chargers, and misuse of our Chromebooks based on social media trends. I'm sure you guys have all heard about it in the news. Realizing that our last agreement was created during COVID and since then is outdated, we would like to adopt this AUP to establish clear guidelines in the district for the use of the students, use of the Chromebooks from grade six to 12, and then just to ensure transparency for student expectations, internet and software use, digital citizenship and online safety, damaged Chromebooks, lost chargers, and then our repair procedures, and then just the consequences of misuse. We're hoping that this will ensure that students and families fully understand their responsibility and the district's expectations with the technology. Any questions?
I was wondering, so are Chromebooks used in the classroom also, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if a student loses their ability, their Chromebook privileges, that means it can't go off school property, but it can still be used in school, obviously, right?
Correct, yes. We can, depending on the situation, you know, we can have situations set up where they're watched while the device is used. We have other situations at the middle school... We have other situations at the middle school where they'll actually turn in the device before they leave for the day. That way that doesn't go home.
And this is for six twelve. We're starting with that. I know John's got some work with the elementary we want to do, but six twelve, we're really seeing some.
Yep. My idea for elementary for next year is they have an agreement policy for the libraries, for their books. So I'm thinking about just creating a back page with them, just simple five, you know, just appropriately use that technology and then look at something more like this for next year.
We're seeing more of the damage at six twelve, right?
Yeah. And fifth graders are kind of creeping, but at this point, they're really sixth graders, so.
Do you also have anything?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Now our action items. Oh, we had the, the bond sale.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. So anyway, we're going to vote on these individually, correct?
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Alrighty, so for action items, the first one is our bond series three sale resolution ratification. It is recommended that the Board ratify the bond series three sale resolution as presented. Is there any questions? Alrighty, Lori?
We need a motion.
Some move. Oh, that we do. Thank you guys.
So Julia and Melissa. Sorry. We'll help you along, don't worry.
Yeah, okay, so there we go. Now we can vote.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cooper.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Melissa Patch.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Okay, motion passed six zero. Next, we have St. Joseph County ISD General Fund Budget Resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution in support of the St. Joseph County ISD General Fund Budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Are there any questions?
I have a question. And it could be because I'm new to this, but she said something about homeless grant, what is that?
So McKinney-Vento is a grant that they get funds for and they, we have a liaison. In the past, we have received some funds, so we help with gas cards or we get school supplies, backpacks, clothes, anything that can support them. They've used it for the liaisons, we've had to be a little bit more creative. But they do get a grant for that, that sometimes feeds back into the districts.
Thanks.
Yep.
Anything else? Alright. I entertain a motion.
Some move.
Support.
Thank you.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cooper.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Melissa Patch.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Thank you, that's passed six zero. Next, St. Joseph County ISD Election Resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution in support of the biennial election of the Board of St. Joseph County ISD, which will be held on Monday, June second, twenty-twenty-five and shall designate the Board, shall designate one representative and one alternate to the ISD Electoral Body to represent Three Rivers Community Schools. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Nicole Cooper.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Melissa Patch.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Motion passed six zero.
Me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was second.
Nicole and Amanda.
Amanda.
Okay, motion passed six zero, thank you. Next is grade six to twelve student acceptable, acceptable use policy concerning Chromebooks. It is recommended the Board adopt the grade six to twelve student acceptable use policy as presented. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Ross Daniel.
Yep.
Melissa Patch.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cooper.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Motion passed six zero. Next, TREA bargaining agreement. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Three Rivers Community Schools and Three Rivers Education Association bargaining agreement as presented. The agreement includes the bargaining salary letter of agreement and the twenty-twenty-six academic calendar. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Melissa Patch.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cooper.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Thank you, motion passes six zero. Next, we have the SEIU Local five-one-seven-M paraprofessional bargaining agreement.
Wait, hold on a second, am I allowed to vote on that?
Oh, no.
I can't.
You can't, you can't. Yes, so we have to go back and do that vote.
Oh.
Because she can't vote on the TREA. Sorry, good catch. Thank you. So we need a new motion on that one.
So yes, we do. So we're back to the TREA.
Wait, remind me, what do I have to say?
Abstain.
Abstain. No.
What is it? Abstain from abstains, yeah.
Or you can recuse.
Or recuse, no, that's fine.
Yeah, throw that in there for me.
So just throw a motion out there for number, for a letter E.
Alrighty, we are considering again the TREA bargaining agreement.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Who was the second?
It works. Hey, I'm glad you're just all eager to do this.
Melissa Patch.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Abstain.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cooper.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Okay, that passes five zero, one abstention. And then we have the SEIU Local five-one-seven-M paraprofessional bargaining agreement. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Three Rivers Community Schools and SEIU Local five-one-seven-M paraprofessional bargaining agreement as presented. Does anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Support.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cooper.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Melissa Patch.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
That'll be passed six zero. We have the consent agenda. Does anyone want any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Otherwise, we'll vote on them as a package. Alrighty, that'll include the approval of the April twenty-first regular meeting minutes, May fifth work session minutes, approval of payroll change register for April twenty-twenty-five, approval of the April twenty-twenty-five accounts payable check register totaling one point six million. Approval of the April twenty-twenty-five bond invoice payment report totaling four hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two, thirty-one cents. Alright, any questions on the consent agenda? Otherwise, I need a motion.
Some move.
Support.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cooper.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Melissa Patch.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
That passes six zero. The Board Calendar, Thursday, May twenty-second is Three Rivers High School graduation. May twenty-sixth is Memorial Day, of course, there's no school. May thirtieth is a one-half day, the last day of school. Also on May thirtieth, St. Joe County Adult Education Graduation, which this year will be in the Sturgis Middle School at six o'clock. June second, twenty-twenty-five, Board of Education work session here. June sixteenth, Board of Education Budget Hearing and Regular Meeting. Any board comments tonight?
Just to remember, at six-thirty at the high school on Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
We will be inside.
Huh?
It is inside.
It is inside.
It is going to be inside, will you?
Nice fall weather that we have in there, okay?
It looked a little chilly, but then I thought, well, I can probably work that out.
Project Graduation has a pig raffle going on through graduation night. One ticket for ten, three for twenty-five. So can see me or any member of the senior class if you'd like to purchase a ticket.
Alright, if we have nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cooper.
Yes.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Melissa Patch.